All right.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, May twenty seventh. Um, I would like to call the meeting to order and our county clerk will provide role, roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Noel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
All right. Um, first we have, um, our invocation. So please stand and join for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
This past Sunday at Cummings Christian Church, we were singing songs and thinking about scriptures that talk about God's action in the country and our relationship to God, particularly being Memorial Day weekend as it was. One of the songs that we sang paraphrased a scripture that's in First Chronicles. I want to read that to you just now. If my people who are called by my name humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, I will hear from heaven and I will forgive their sin and heal their land. The interesting statement about that passage is the Lord says, there's nothing wrong with saying you're wrong. When it says to humble yourself, you have to say, I'm wrong. And he calls on us to do just exactly that. The passage we looked at in the scripture was Jesus dealing with the Apostle Peter after the resurrection. Feed my sheep, Peter, humble yourself. And, uh, we continue to think about that and I just want you to remember that the Lord says it's all right to say we're wrong. We're going to change our mind. We're going to do something different. We're going to humble ourselves. Let's bow in prayer. Father in heaven, thank you for the great promise you have to be involved with us in our life. I pray, Father, that as the commissioners meet today, that you will guide their minds, guide their hearts, that they look to you for leadership. I pray, Father, that your leadership will be active and effective in guiding them in this time. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Talk soon.
All right, public comment. Mr. Corbode.
I mean, just said what I said. I'm almost embarrassed before I'm going to. I just read in the, uh, news that, uh, KDOT is going to start working on Highway fifty nine this summer and it, it occurred to me, it really seemed like bad timing that they're going to work on the two sixty two bridge during harvest time. When we've got a maximum number of trucks trying to go to Cargill and they're going to be closing US fifty nine more or less five days a week. That just seemed like about a sensitivity to, it'll be a little nice on the contractor out there to do the work during January blizzard. It makes about as much sense to me as what's happened. I also wish if they were working on the two sixty two bridge, that they would really convert that into a bridge that's really got enough clearance for eighteen wethers to go down through there and under that. Because two sixty two needs that kind of function because of a potential connection to Cargill down that direction. And, uh, just, I just wish KDOT weren't going to be closing the road during harvest time.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda, uh, don't have any additions this morning, so I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Can we?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. All right, next is consent agenda that has our commission meeting minutes for last week and the finance director will give a review.
Morning.
Morning.
There is no payroll this week and surprisingly enough, there's no credit cards, so this will keep her.
Be.
Um, it's first time. So with that being said, the expense run for tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, May twenty eighth is thirty thousand twenty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Pretty small. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, since three to zero. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Campbell.
You know, I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Noel.
Uh, there's a fundraiser for the Atchison County Fair this weekend. Uh, don't uh, have too many details, but, uh, I know that they're looking to im- improve finances and everything for their fair. Uh, I just encourage people to go participate and have fun.
Hey, awesome. Um, last week, um, there was a project concern meeting last Wednesday, um, that I attended, um, just to listen to, um, what the group was working on. Um, there was an elected focus group, um, that the Main Street Program Jill at the Chamber had, um, hosted uh, with the state of Kansas. Um, so I attended that as well. And then the Atchison County, um, Lake Committee had their first meeting Friday at two o'clock, um, and I attended that as well. Um, okay, new business. We have Pat Henderson, County Counselor, um, that's going to walk us through, um, the tax sale, uh, explanation as far as how the properties, um, are are chosen and, and added and basically the whole process of the tax sale. Um, for information, information only for constituents. So, um, also he has a lease agreement with Memorial Hall trustees. Thanks, Pat.
Well, the, uh, the, the tax sale process is part of the collection of taxes and you're heading into your budget, uh, you're in your budget preparation cycle right now. Yeah, and that, uh, really ends in October when you approve your budget and submit it to the county clerk and then by November, uh, of every year, the taxes that are due for that year become a lien upon the real estate that the taxes are levied upon and then also the, uh, the county clerk calculates the, the levy, et cetera. Then those tax statements get mailed out. Uh, usually in November or December, the deadline for that is actually December fifteenth, which is only five days before the first half of the taxes are actually due, December twentieth of each year. And then the, the second half of taxes are due in May, May tenth of the, the following year. And so, so that process is really beyond the scope of the, the tax sale that it's kind of important to understand that the first part of the tax sale begins with delinquent taxes and taxes become delinquent if they're not paid by that uh, May tenth, second half uh, deadline it's set by statute. And then after May tenth, there's kind of a month of, uh, cooling off, I guess, where the the, the treasurer is still accepting taxes to come in, but then come July, the treasurer, uh, has to compile a list of all the properties that have delinquent real estate taxes on them and then, uh, to publish a list of those properties in the newspaper. That, that list, uh, not only includes notification about the parcels, but also notice that the treasurer will have a sale of the property on the first Tuesday of September. And the sale is, I think, not well understood. It is a sale that only the county treasurer can participate in. The county treasurer is the auctioneer, if you will, and also is the bidder on behalf of the county. Uh, but have this type of legally significant, but almost types of medical sale, the county treasurer bids in the amount of the delinquent taxes. Well, there's no third party bidding that's allowed. That's different from several states and some other states that, uh, the taxes are delinquent, a person can pay them and then try to collect the amount that they paid from the tax pay. That's not the case in Kansas. So uh, on the day of the sale, um, the, the treasurer determined for the, the bids, the cost of advertising, that is the cost of, uh, of doing the publication. Uh, and has a, has a sale where the county, uh, county bids the amount of those taxes and then the county purchases every bit of real estate that has delinquent real estate taxes for that year. Then following that sale, there is a period of redemption and redemption is a period of time to have the landowner may retain the, the property by paying all of the delinquent taxes, interest, uh, special assessments, any other fees that are owing against the property. That typically, for, for most properties, um, that period of time is three years that uh, from that sale, the, uh, uh, from and after that sale in September, the, the person has three years to pay the taxes to keep it from going into uh, judicial foreclosure action, which is the tax sale case that we find. Now, the statute does allow for shorter periods of time, but there are some difficulties with that. Uh, for commercial property, for example, that is not a homestead, really doesn't have to be commercial property, any property that is not a homestead. Uh, it's, it's only two years that it has to be delinquent before it can go into the sale. Uh, one problem with that though is Kansas doesn't have any obligation for people to declare their homestead. So there are properties where somebody may live or even have lived at one point and intend to live there. It would still be homestead that don't have any active sign that they are, that somebody's living there. Uh, there can also be parcels that are meticulous to the parcel that someone is living on could be claimed as homestead. Uh, so our current computer system doesn't have a great way of determining what properties are or are not homestead. So for the most part, we give the benefit of the doubt to the landowner and wait at three years. There, there's also, uh, it can get be as quickly as one year past that delinquent sale for structures that are abandoned. It's not property that's abandoned, it's structures that are abandoned. And the, the definition on, uh, on, uh, abandoned property has to show there's, uh, there hasn't been any maintenance that's been done to the property. Uh, and that's has some difficulties in proving that because we don't have a, a real good system of going around and observing every property every year and then following up frequently enough to know whether there's been any sort of, uh, work that's been done. It's a little easier within the city limits, um, because most of the time in a city, the, uh, city government's providing water services and if there's no water to a property, there's no electricity to a property, that's a pretty good sign that it's been abandoned. Uh, but you know, and there's you, I guess you wouldn't know until you file the lawsuit and tried to include the property in it and someone presented a defense to it. But the, the statutes then provide though, if the property has not been redeemed during this period of redemption, that the county shall commence a foreclosure, say, under chapter seventy-nine of Kansas statutes. And we just finished a, a sale, uh, and we allow, uh, well, we just finished the sale and I say we finished it. We've, we had the sale, but we're, we're now finished with the that process because we still have the money being held by the clerk of district court. We have a motion filed with the, uh, clerk of the court to confirm the sale, that is to prove the sale and determine that everything was done according to the rules and to give anybody that was aggrieved by the process, the opportunity to present their objections and have those heard by a judge, which is fundamentally what's required by due process. Uh, this process of the judicial foreclosure begins with a collaborative process to figure out which parcels are eligible for the sale. And, uh, we're, we're in that process right now. Uh, the, uh, the treasurer and I have had some discussion about it in a spread, shared spreadsheet with the properties that appear to be eligible and gone through those and we've, we've removed some of them for various reasons, bankruptcy filings that may have taken place. Some whether there's a doubt is the, whether, uh, we have, we have some parcels that they have been combined. So we have one parcel, I think, that has taxes showing up from two thousand and five or six, something like that. And that property is actually sold at a private tax sale, but we, we can't figure out how to get those out of the computer system. So we've got some that are problems like that. We have one parcel that the, uh, amount of, it, it's a very small sliver of land and the yearly taxes on it are something around three dollars. And we're trying to make a decision about whether to pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the abstracting on that parcel to clear up a small, very small problem. So anyway, we're, we're going through the pro, the process and pulling out some parcels that might technically be eligible, but there might be a reason not to include them. We have a few parcels that are owned by the state of Kansas that we imposed a, uh, solid waste fee on back in twenty twelve. There is no authorization for the state or for the county to be able to foreclose upon those. Uh, there's a Kansas Supreme Court decision that says something along the line that everybody should get together and pay the rightful amount that's owed. We have one parcel of property that's owned by, uh, a, a city of the third class that, uh, owes taxes for an assessment by that same city against its own property. They assessed against every property in the city, but it included their own. That hasn't been paid, though we're, we're not likely to include that in the sale. And I don't think there's statutory authority for us to include that in the sale. It's property that the city owes to itself. We're just the collector of that. So we do that internal research. We do some cross-checking to make sure that the owners have not filed a bankruptcy or something like that that might impact the taxes. Uh, then we send that list for abstracting. We have, uh, just one vendor in the county that does abstracting services and they have done a phenomenal job of it for of the whole, I've been involved. Uh, we, we did look at a couple of times sending it to, well, we used to have two and then we, we split it between the two of them, but, uh, in, in the last several years, there's only been one provided. We did look at two times about, uh, bidding it how to, uh, a debt to allow other vendors, but we didn't have much interest and I think we're getting a, a reasonable cost based on what I have seen other counties are paying through county council's list. Uh, but it, but anyway, that, that's going to be coming up fairly soon. After that list is, uh, or after the abstracting is done, but the purpose of the abstracting is for the abstracters to tell us every person or entity that might possibly claim an interest in the property, which is different than the decisions they're making most of the time regarding, uh, regarding ownership of property, because we also want to know people that might have a claim to it, but we think their claims are spurious. We, we still want to list those and I give them an opportunity to come in and show the court that they actually do have an interest in the property. So after we have the list, uh, we can put together a petition that includes information about every parcel that has taxes that are sufficiently delinquent and that have gone through all of these steps to be eligible for the sale into, we list those in petition filed with the court. And then after that, we have to notify every claimant uh, to the extent that we can of dependency of the case and notify them that there's a possibility that their real estate could get sold at a tax sale if they don't pay the taxes. At every point in this process up until there's actually a sale, a taxpayer may redeem the property by paying the amount of the taxes that are due. File the half, if they make that payment after the lawsuit is filed, they may have to pay court costs that are compensated by the court. Um, and of course they would have to pay any interest that's owing up until the, up until the time of the, the sale. Then we try to find, locate all of those claimants, uh, serve them either through personal service or if we're unable to get personal service on them. Uh, sometimes we have people that will voluntarily, uh, sign a waiver of service because they want their property to be included in the sale. We had two of those in this last tax. We didn't have service of process, but the, the owners wanted the property to go through the sale. But I guess they weren't interested in the property anymore. Uh, one of them was, uh, person's mother had owned property and, uh, the city had torn the house down, for example, so. So some, sometimes we get a waiver that's fairly rare. And then for those that you can't serve personally, if we can show that we've made reasonable efforts known as due diligence to try to locate that owner, the person may be served through publication notice only. Uh, publication notice is subject to attack. And when a person who owns property is looking at their connections with the county, they of course know all of those things and they know, for example, I played golf with a sheriff's deputy. And so if the sheriff was trying to find me, they could have easily found me if they had, if you had just asked the right person. Uh, and it's kind of like playing that game, the six degrees of Kevin Bacon game. If you can play that with county's relationship to any particular landowner. One thing that's different from this type of, from a tax sale versus just about every other type of of, uh, judicial sale of real estate is that after there is a sale that's completed, there is no opportunity for the taxpayer to get the property back. So in mortgage foreclosure case, the owner of the property typically has three months after there's a sheriff's sale to get the property back. That's not the case with the tax sale. Their time to redeem the property is until the day before the sale. The, uh, after we've gone through the process of getting service of process, we file an affidavit with the court explaining the efforts that we took to try to find people that we weren't able to serve. The court looks at that. If the court agrees, then the court grants judgment. And the judgment is for the amount of taxes, penalties that are due as of the date of that judgment. Uh, that sometimes involves adding an additional year of taxes on if the judgment occurs after November first. And, um, but anyway, it's everything that's owed up to the day of the, the, the judgment. After the judgment, the clerk of the district court, upon request, issues an order to the sheriff directing the sheriff to advertise the properties for sale and to conduct a sale. That, that, that notice has to be published once a week for three consecutive weeks. The sale can't take happen, or the sale can't take place and, um, before thirty days after the first publication, so it has to be at least thirty-one days after that first publication date. Um, there are some people that are not allowed to purchase at the sale. So people that owe delinquent taxes on other properties can't buy more at the tax sale. So every person that registers for a bid number, the county treasurer has to check to see if they own if they owe taxes on other properties and if they do, they're not issued a, a bid number. Uh, we also have to check, it's becoming much more popular for entities to like limited liability companies to own property and we always check to make sure that those entities are registered to do business in the state of Kansas and that they are up to date with their registration requirements because those have to be renewed every year and it just frankly creates a lot more problems if we're trying to deal with a defunct limited liability company to get service of process on then, future tax sale. Which is part of the reason why we do that. Also, if you were a person that owned the real estate, uh, that's included in the sale, you can't buy it back at the sale. That had been a strategy that some people thought this property isn't worth, worth much. I could rebuy it from the, the tax sale for less than the amount owed. Uh, that's not allowed. Uh, relatives, there are certain listed relatives of the landowner that can't buy, that they include children, grandchildren, grandparents, uh, lineal descendants and ancestors that are not allowed to, to purchase. We typically have the auction at Memorial Hall uh, because it's big enough for, well, it's big enough to be comfortable and we really don't have other places. We, we had one on the in the front hallway of the courthouse and it kind of shut down. There wasn't any other business really that could take place while that was going on. The, the county is not required to bid on any property until the sheriff's sale. Uh, you are allowed to, the board of county commissioners could if they decided that they wanted to. Uh, you could bid on any of the properties, but you're limited in that bid to the total amount that's owed as of the day of the sale. That is to the delinquent taxes and interest and penalties that are owed up to that point for the county to make the bid. After the sale, we file a motion with the court for approval of the process that's been used, giving notice to everyone who had property that was sold in the sale, if we know their addresses, uh, giving property, giving notice to everyone who, uh, registered to bid at the sale and certainly everybody that did purchase at the sale. And we'll, we're having that hearing coming up, uh, I think it's on June ninth. And, uh, I expect that the court will approve this last tax sale and then order the sheriff to issue deeds to each one of those parcels of property. So we'll prepare those deeds, they have to be signed by the sheriff. The sheriff's signature has to be attested by the clerk of the district court. Then those deeds are taken to the register of deeds office and recorded. Uh, the, count the cost of recording the deeds is paid from the amount that's bid. And in fact, I didn't mention the, the starting bid at the, at the tax sale is the, is thirty-eight dollars, which is the cost to record a two-page deed. And so deeds get recorded and it isn't until that deed is reported that the purchaser of the sale becomes the owner of the property. Uh, we have, uh, a set of rules that were reminders, warnings and just general information about the sale that we, uh, put on the website. People may get it and it kind of explains some of the more common situations that come up. Uh, but it seems that after every single sale we've had, there's at least one person that one person who purchased real estate at the sale who asked the question that they really wouldn't have need to ask if they had read that set of instructions about the sale. Uh, the proceeds of the sale go first to the payment of court costs. And then to the payment of the delinquent taxes that are owed. And this last sale, the one, two properties that sold for more than the amount of the taxes that were owed. And so, uh, and so anyway, though, if we will be refunding money back to the owners of those after payment of the court costs and the amount of the, uh, the delinquent taxes. The treasurer will get a check from the clerk of the district court and it's the treasurer, treasurer's job to divide that up among all of the taxing entities uh, that were involved with the properties that had delinquent taxes. So that's, uh, I, I'd be speculating how many dozens typically, right? Yeah. After a sale is confirmed by the court, when the court has that hearing and decide, determines that everything was done properly, any landowner that is aggrieved by that, any one who thinks Any landowner that is aggrieved by that, any one who thinks that their land shouldn't have been sold. Has one year in which they could file a lawsuit or file something in that case to ask the court to set aside. The uh, the sale. That is a very uncommon situation. I I I think we've had uh. Maybe two of those motions filed in the last dozen years. Uh, neither of them were successful, but they they typically. The ones that are successful, which you read about in Kansas Supreme Court decisions typically relate to. Someone who was not served by personal notice, but was served by publication service, who claims that they should have. The county could have found them if they had just tried a little bit harder. So that in a uh. In summary form is how the tax sale process works. Uh, we've got. Two of those processes going on right now. We're narrowing down the ways that this is abstracting. I think we can. Probably have those sent uh in the next. Two weeks probably. Uh, and then we also have the the last sale that we're. We're still holding, the court of the district court is still holding proceeds from the sale. And allowing the court to determine what to do with with those.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
The other issue that I was asked to talk about involved a lease agreement with the with Memorial Hall. And uh, I talked with uh. With Mark a little bit about this. And then through the process of doing it, it kind of became a little obvious, not obvious, but. Seemed preferable to me that we have two agreements in place, but because one agreement between. Uh, the the three of you as the board of county commissioners and the three member board and trustees. That the this building is a special building, Memorial Hall. It's a special building on a. It was constructed as a uh memorial for veterans and. Under the statute, memorials for veterans are to be managed by a a group of trustees. And two of them had to have been in service of the United States or its allies during. Uh, periods of war and that service includes things that maybe not are traditionally seen as uh. Combat related, but they they could be uh. Working in the Red Cross, as mentioned in the statute, so. Uh, so it also does include women who were in service in World War Two and. I I should have read the statute maybe earlier. I don't think we've had that come up as applicants for those positions. The board of trustees has traditionally leased the building to. Uh, the Atchison Recreation Commission who operates. There, uh, they have their office down there and they operate the. A lot of activities there. They have basketball, they have indoor soccer, they skating. It's used for trainings, it's used. For people walking, used for a lot of things by the recreation commission. Uh, so what I've prepared and can, I think I emailed to each of you a uh. A copy of that, uh, the draft lease. Well, that puzzled face makes me think that might have been on Saturday.
I.
Well, you said that we should have two agreements. You said the first is between board of commi- uh county commissioners and the board of trustee, then who would the second?
The second is between the trustees and the recreation commission, okay. My apologies, they are still in drafts. I just I just emailed it to the three of you now. Um, it it's a good idea that that be reviewed to make sure that it covers everything because. It's a lot easier to make changes before both sides have seen it. So if there are things that we need to change, we. Be preferable to make those. Before we send it along. I I think it's in a pretty good state, um, both of those. But anyway, they should be reviewed. We. They want to take a minute, have you uh. They not maybe not take a minute now, but uh.
Yeah. So.
Take take it up at the. At the end of the meeting or at the next meeting. If there are questions about it or concerns, anything to be discussed. I had not sent that. Um, I I just sent it. I think you. Probably shouldn't take action on it right this minute, you should read it and maybe have a little discussion before. We send them on.
So can we just put this on next week? Good with that? Okay. Thank you, Pat. Uh, next we have Mark Zeltner, Finance Director, consideration of EO for plumbing repairs for court out of reserve fund.
Yeah, so I got an invoice from Maintenance Department to Kerrigan Lumber. For thirty six dollars and seventy eight cents. Um, some plumbing parts for the ongoing repair of what Brian found, so it'll be paid out of the reserve fund.
Our motion to approve um this purchase order to Kerrigan Lumber for thirty six seventy eight um. Out of the reserve fund.
So moved second.
Moved in second, as all those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. And just so the public knows, we we usually don't approve. This small invoices uh or purchase orders, but because it's coming out of our reserve fund, we definitely. Uh, want to make sure that we're on top of what that looks, so. Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
So, oh, I didn't add that. Can we just add that chief elected officials agreement to next week's? Um, so we had been asked from the workforce. To sign this agreement and we've been trying to find history on it. Well, Susan found one from twenty twenty three that we signed. So we'll have that on next week's agenda.
Okay.
Um, all right. Communicating with the public, so um. I put this on here because I think it's a good idea that we all uh talk about how we will. What the channel of communication with the public is. Um, it feels like there's been a lot of things on the forefront lately. And it seems I'm driving away from the courthouse and like, oh gosh, what do I, or someone asked like. Hey, are you gonna put out that you're not selling the county lake? And so um. Historically, instinct is to reach out to. Mark or Jody because they have uh the ability to do things on social media um and a website and. I was kind of. But also like, I don't know that that's necessarily their job to communicate on our behalf as the finance director or HR, so. The county lake was one example because the folks. Were like, hey, you're gonna put that out, right? It's like, oh yeah, it's a good idea. And it seems like it's sometimes an afterthought. Um. And then like we had done the beef proclamation, so I asked, can we put this beef proclamation out? Um, and then. Susan had responded and I'm like, okay, let's just put this on the agenda to talk about. And then immediately Brian Hagan from CARE was asking me questions about our meeting, so. I just think it's really good for us to be on the same page as far as how we communicate. Um, and have a point person, um, and. Maybe, I don't know if you're you're the fit for us because you're with us all the time of. Of being that liaison with, you know, so and I CC'd you guys in with my response to Brian. Um, so that everyone's on the same page as. What we ask you to put on, I just copied that and gave it to Brian, you know, but I just. Sometimes it feels choppy and wonky and I just want to make sure that. We all feel good, right? And we're getting information out to the public um on our Atchison County Facebook Facebook page that. That is cohesive and and what we we want to see, so feel free to just open roundtable discussion.
I don't mind doing it in my slightest for you guys at all. I just don't want to say a wrong word or or something that you. Don't agree with.
Yeah. Just what I told you as well. I don't mind posting it.
Or if it's coming from a commissioner or, you know, what exactly those things could be, I mean, and. Uh, I have a an example too of communications I've heard through social media. Just this week about, they just heard about the zoning meeting and why wouldn't we put that out? It's like we were trying to hide. That and it's like, well, wait a minute, we have put it out, but because it wasn't in a. Form that maybe is readily accessible to them or, you know, how they get their news, it seems to be hidden.
So that's another good example of like how how we communicate and we're learning, right? Because we want to communicate. We learned on the lake flyer. We thought that was good. We thought we had all the, and then perception is, oh, wow, we should have, you know, now we know like how to.
Well, but. If unless you would vet that, uh, e- each circumstance has its own. Boibles or or different things there that maybe. Uh, in that case, maybe we should advertise in Horton because there's some proximity, but that isn't. True to most of our business, but I mean, each one is different and if you. You know, it's it's hard to do just the typical cookie cutter approach and reach everybody, but. I I don't know. I just thought that one was, I thought we were being very transparent because we were putting this out on. Social media and everything and then it's like, well, they're trying to hide it.
So would it be good then if we just start like a standard process of adding communicating with the public to the bottom of our agenda? And we give our county clerk direction at the each of the end of the meeting, like, hey, is there anything in this next week that we want to put out on social media or the website? What does it look like? And then she can ask any questions she needs to, you know.
Be like an agenda point would be communications.
Yeah, I think if you were gonna do that, what I would like would be together. It's an email that's getting drafted up and that gets sent to me and that way I'm not left needing to. Try to phrase it the way that you want it phrased. Um, and it's. It's straight from you guys. It's not me interpreting what you're saying. I I just don't want to be in a position where I'm.
I like that. Yeah, I like that, yeah. Yeah, that it gives you backup, so if there was something that was. So perceived to be phrased wrong, you could say, here's the email from the commissioners that I took it from.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, because I think there's been similar things that with the finance director that you asked for that you wanted to have kind of. So so you're not left stranded or feeling stranded if if so be it.
I I I don't, but the county clerk does not have a Facebook page, so anything that would go on the county page would. Needs to be coming from you, not not me for you.
From us.
Yes.
So possibly collectively.
As a collective, I would like to see. Us lean towards on those on communications and that I would like to see us lean towards a unanimous. Decision on those those.
Similar like we did with the CARE radio of like, hey, here's a rough draft. This is what I'm sending. What do you guys think? And then.
Yeah, I I think it needs to be. I will, I so I've I've got a little bit different perspective on that because you could have. If we were gonna put out like a decision on the county lake, well, if it was a two to one vote, I think you could. Say we are doing it, it was a two to one vote, as long as there was. It was put out, there was dissent or something on there because the decision. Is is gonna be, you're not always gonna have a three to zero vote on things and and the news is. From the county is still it this past, but it passed on. Well, we're not, we're not talking about necessarily those those types of items. It could be.
The proclamation.
Could be the proclamation, which we would not have. Uh, what I'm saying is what goes out, how it goes out should be unanimous. Um. But to your point, yes, on those specific items like the lake or something that doesn't actually get a the. Three zero vote, we can specify, but generally speaking, the information we're talking about is, you know, these uh. Smaller yet important issues, you know, so but yeah, I think I think we just need to be on the same page and that's fine.
So so if we just utilize notices and communication, which is already on here. And then we just, when we get to that point, like right now, the only thing on there is a reminder for tomorrow night's meeting for zoning and planning. But when we get to this, then we can stop and be like, okay, is there anything else we need to put on here? Is there anything we need to get out to the public? And then if we determine that. I can write a rough draft or one of us can write a rough draft and we can just look at it together. When we give the thumbs up, then send it to her and she can put it on there for us. Does that sound like a good channel?
Yeah, I would I would send it to her and the commissioners, so then we all get exactly the same thing.
Yep. And then you, I mean.
And then we have a record of, you know, it's not like, okay, we talked about this, but it maybe. It's worded a little different or something, so we all get exactly the same.
And although, but but by the time it gets sent to me, I know it's approved by all three of you.
So I I'm trying to understand that timeline too, right? Because a lot of the things like, okay, say today was a big day. And we were like, okay, you know, feeling good, we need to get this out to the public. We need to do that during our meeting.
We could, if it was a short notice type of thing, we could do that.
And then otherwise, we can do a rough draft through the week and approve it next week, but. I just think sometimes we getting our own information out is important, right? Like to the public.
Well, and and that's good because. It gives the three of us the time to decide, okay, we need another week. To 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 look at this. We're not gonna just decide today to put it out. We don't have enough information. So yes, I I like that idea. Now, now this is just, you're just talking about social media, right?
Or the website.
That's what I was gonna ask next. You're also need direction on where you want to post it.
Yeah.
But but so communicating with the public, that's a general kind of a. Wide ranging subject, so my my question then again is. So we've got a local newspaper, we've got a radio station, we've got. Social media and we're still not reaching everybody we'd like to reach. So then the question is, um. You know, we had a. Idea given to us at one of our commission, at one of our missionaries uh seminars, meetings. And it was possibly put it on the back of the water.
Yep.
Bill going out, that you could put a one liner or whatever, and you could, you know, even put it. You know, county county news, county business, and then underneath just a one liner that says. This is it. Short of that, you're talking mailing to 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 everybody, which is. You know, expensive to try to get out maybe a one liner to just remind people. Have we have we, can we do that? Have we looked at maybe doing that?
So Susan had also sent us that flyer. Um, she learned that at one of her conferences to utilize her mailings. Where they're, you know, whether the valuations or the R and R notices um to say, hey, you know, and it's a cohesive flyer. Similar to what we did at the fair, right? Like, we give information what's happening in the county and certain departments and.
Upcoming important dates.
Yeah, and just, you know, instead of handing them out, they would go to everybody. So you know someone's not missing them, to your point, like you're you're physically mailing it to their address, so um. I like it.
That's a great way to reach more people, but you're never gonna reach. Everybody, of course, because you got the renters that aren't ever gonna get any of the mail. You know, renters aren't receiving. You know, renters aren't receiving pretty taxes or valuation notices or R and R notices, so. It just is, and, and then they have to read it too.
Yeah, that, reasonable expectation, yeah, we're not, we can't reach everyone. Um, because the, it's, it's a two, it's a, it's a two sided street here. We can put the information out, but the, the public has to wanna be involved, they have to wanna read it and be involved. So it's, it's definitely a two way street. Um, um, but I'm, I'm all for. You know, try to communicate in another way, maybe, and, and like I said, if it's, if it's something that they know. Is gonna happen routinely, then it's something that they can look for. You know, whether we put it on every month or every quarter, uh, is, is yet to be determined. But if we, if, if they know that this is, hey, we, you may get a message. From us, uh, this way, they'll know to look at it. Um, but I feel pretty good about what we've done. Since I've come on, I've, I feel pretty good about the way we've communicated and, and made it. Uh, clear that we want the public to know, I mean, to public meetings.
Yep. Been great.
You know, so I think, uh, it, it, it's hard to argue with that, we're, we're trying to get the word out. That's a little bit the, the same, um, email, social media chain that we're saying that. Well, they're trying to hide it.
Yeah.
I heard criticism that, well, why are they having special meetings? I mean, if, if, if they can't decide on their own, you know, basically, you know, they don't. And, and I thought that was, well, wait a minute here, are we, is, was this too much information or not enough? So you're, you're not gonna satisfy those people and I don't mean, it's just different, again, different perspective on. How they get their, their news, where it's coming from, how they decipher it and what they wanna see.
So I think this is wonderful conversation, I think this will go, we can get a list of what the mailing dates are. And, and figure out, you know, what the additional, well, then we determine, right? What information do we wanna get out within these dates? Kind of put something together and then we can have a cost for, cause there will be a cost to print, which there is with our fair flyers every year. Um, but then to your point, if we get into kind of a, a rough year rhythm. Then we can know and they can expect it, you know, like, hey, I know when the R and R is coming out, I'm gonna know what, you know, what's happening or.
Even the courthouse, like tax statements, that would be a perfect thing to go ahead and put like the calendar dates that were closed. I mean, and then any special things that you guys already have on the calendar or.
The, the tax due date, like May tenth or, and December, you know, and, and those things, important dates for.
Elections.
Getting things in.
Elections, yes, the only other thing that I'm thinking, and I don't know if this is remotely feasible, if there'd be any way to do it, is that I think. The main way people get information is through email and text. And if there would be any way for us to.
Code Red. If you utilize code red.
You know, offer it for people to sign up. For, and I, I don't know how that would be managed, I, it's just completely in theory. But to be able to email out a newsletter or, you know, we have the people that sign up for the agendas. And they get that email to them. And that might encourage more people to sign up or to.
So we have that on the website.
Okay.
Already, it exists for like the tax sale, it's hugely popular for the tax sale. People call us, we tell them to go to the website, sign up for the tax sale notifications. You can go in there and sign up for all the different notifications, which I've done myself, just so I can be aware of what's coming down.
Theoretically have a newsletter.
Yes.
And then you could put out a newsletter electronically through email or people maybe could sign up through text as well.
Or, yeah, just a reminder that they could do that, sign up for all of these are available to go here. So that could be catching them in a different form to get them, to direct them in that area.
And we're thinking that in conjunction with mailings. Because like for the mornings, it's like, hey, what's your email? I don't do email, like, right, so.
Yeah, I think you do both and then you hit.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's our demographic, um, ages, communication's going to change. You know, I mean, text is a great way to get a hold of my mom. She's in that upper demographic, you know.
There's a whole slew of people that are like, oh, you send an email, I don't really see emails, but they see texts. They, they will read a text, it's, it's instant, it's right there, they handle it, they look at it, it's, it's move on. But when an email pops up, they go, oh, I'll look at that later. And if it's not important enough in life, they might not ever make it to look at.
So code red has a section in it where you can sign up for the notifications. So if we would, that would be a place, we could direct people to go there, sign up, you don't have to sign up for. The, if you don't want your alarm going off in the middle of the night because there's a storm, don't sign up for that, just sign up for the notifications.
Right.
And then you can push emerg, I mean, cause it depends, like, there's notifications or there's emergency alerts or weather alerts. So that person can go into code red and decide what you are wanna get, if I only wanna get.
Perfect.
Yeah, if I only wanna get, and you know, that's something that I should have been utilizing myself for, um, taxes are due. Yeah, I should have been, I should have pushed that message, um, and hadn't even really thought of it until just now. That that would have been a good utilization.
So we just would have to get.
Yeah, and I think the sheriff's office, um, James and Travis, I think have access to that, so.
Now, do you have to have permission? I'm assuming you have to permission, people will be able to.
Because the ones that are, um, set out widely are not code reds. Like when you get an amber alert, those are real alerts, they are not code red alerts.
Another question for James, um, is it possible that we could find out just? How many, uh, folks in the county take the globe? Can we, can we just get a number?
Yeah, I could ask, I, it's changed, but yeah, I can.
I'd be curious to, to get a, 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 like a current number of how many folks we reach through the paper, just.
Yeah, that would be.
Well, I'd like to use that, you can't, I don't know that, that CARE can gauge, I don't know if they have a way of gauging. But you certainly, yeah, we could certainly find out, thank you, I appreciate that, I mean.
CARE does, um, studies, like they'll.
Okay.
They'll do, uh, surveys to see how many listeners, how, you know, how many people are listening and. That, they, they probably have that as well.
Yeah, we could talk with Carl and maybe.
Yeah, I asked her that question when I met with her and the airtime is hard to gauge, but they, they utilize MSC news. And then also social media and then they can pull numbers from that.
Yeah, we'll find out.
Yeah. Awesome, well, so then we will get kind of the list of mailing dates and kind of talk through with that example, some of the information we do wanna get out. Um, in conjunction with our treasurer and clerk of, you know. Cause again, your, to your point, election dates would be great, there is tax, like, if we could collaborate on a document that gives. All the important information would be wonderful.
And all the phone numbers and then people get it on their refrigerator or they take a picture on their phone of it and then they've got all the information.
I like it.
Is Facebook the only social media we utilize?
I didn't hear the question.
Is Facebook the only social media we utilize?
For some reason, I felt like we did other ones historically.
I think there were some of our own X, Twitter.
I don't have access to those accounts.
Do, than just Facebook?
I don't, just an idea.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how much we can. It used to, everything that we used to post on Facebook went to X, I don't know if it still does or not.
I think we're, we're, we're done fine with what we have, I mean, what we proposing, what we've had.
Okay, cool, well, we'll just start talking about that on number fourteen when we get there. Um, speaking of that, the zoning and planning meeting, um, is tomorrow evening at seven P M. Um, it'll be in the large courtroom upstairs. Um, and I think that information's getting out, when I was parking this morning at the courthouse, uh. Brian Hagan on CARE had it on there and, and referenced something you put on social media of explaining and I thought it sounded really, really good. Really good.
I think, well, I'm gonna put one post on there and it was just that, uh. Just different things come up and we wanna hear.
Yeah, that's what he.
Okay.
It sounded wonderful, I was like, go Eric, that was good, so.
I don't, I don't post very much on social media, uh, I sit on a venue that I feel comfortable with. And, uh, but I, I do monitor it, so if people.
Yep.
And if they wanna get a hold of me, that's fine, I'll respond to them, so.
Speaking of that, that's another thing, going back to the communication is. Because we don't have an information officer, if we put out posts on our social media. Our staff is not responding to any questions or any comments. So just so the public knows, like, we're, we are, we don't have a city manager, right? Well, one person in charge and we don't have an informations officer, so hesi- hesitancy, especially when answering questions. On behalf of a body of three, um, that if you don't get a response, that's why. It's, it's a different makeup than, than the city of Axison government where, you know, but.
That's.
So I just wanna make sure, that's something that just popped in my head of, people are like, well, nobody ever responds, well, because we don't respond. Like, we can't respond as a body, so just to make sure that the public's aware of that, like, we definitely wanna put information out, but any questions. Um, you know, obviously, you have all of our contact on the, on the website, you could reach out to us individually. Um, or that commissioner's email, um, but beyond that, we won't be. We don't have access to the social media and our staff will not be answering on behalf of the body.
And you guys can't talk to each other in between.
No.
Right.
Like, yeah.
And don't.
And that's my hesitancy with using a group, a social media thing, it's hard to explain. And keep track of what's your personal opinion and then what has come through, uh, as a decision to do by the board. And so you start going down that road and it, it's too easily confused. Uh, people could read it different ways, and so that's the reason I don't like that venue to respond. And I try to, when I do, it's more of a general information, it's like, come, let us know, email us. Talk with us, that type of thing, so that's, that's the reason, cause I've had some people saying, well, you never re, uh, there's, you don't respond via that. And I'm going like, well, there's reasons.
Yeah.
And, and mostly when I tell them that, they're very respectful.
Yep. All right, awesome, um, okay, so we have executive session, um, fifteen minutes. We have, uh, non-elected personnel with our appraiser. For personal matters on subject of wages, um, and who will be included in this? Okay.
You say three commissioners, Mark.
Finance and appraiser. And it's fifteen minutes.
Fifteen. I'll move the board of county commissioners, recessed executive session, uh, eleven oh four. A M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be. Uh, Holly Hafferhorn, uh, Mark Zeltner and the three commissioners. So, break.
I'll second, yeah, so we've just seconded, sorry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session and we have a non-elected, um, personnel. Sorry, are you me?
One.
Yeah, it's right here, non-elected personnel, um, on the subject of staffing circumstances for twenty minutes. With, um, the treasurer, the commission, county counselor. That's it?
No, Susan, I'm ever gonna hear, sorry.
Yeah. Very, very positioning, yes, you got it, then.
Yeah.
We'll have plenty of time, so that's good.
Okay, I'll move the board of county commissioners, recessed executive session. Eleven twenty A M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of the executive session in twenty minutes. In the commission room, courthouse basement, and those present will be county treasurer, county commissioners, county counselor. Finance and clerk.
I'll second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three to zero. All right, we are back in open session, we will extend the previous executive session for another fifteen minutes.
Same parameters, same committee to vote.
Yep, all right, I will make that motion.
Okay, I thought you did already, I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero.
My question.
All right, we are back in open session. Um, okay, so our next, we have, um, budget workshops beginning at twelve thirty.
Um, it's technically one o'clock, Connie is not going to go today.
Oh, okay, so we have till one o'clock. Um. Um, do we? Wanna have an executive session with H R and finance?
Hmm, it's be fun.
Okay, um, all right, thirty minutes, non-elected. Let me see if she's available, sorry, it's kind of like last week. Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat, my, Susan.
Welcome.
Yes.
Um, regarding personal matters, subject of wages. All right, you good?
Yep.
Got everything? I'm, I'm seeing, yeah. I don't have that jabber thing up, I, to go quicker, so.
And it doesn't work anymore.
Oh, okay, well, I just emailed to, hopefully she's can see that.
Are you talking about Jody?
Yeah. Well, we can add her and if she can come, great, if not, we can talk to Mark.
Okay, I'll move it to board of county commissioners, recessed executive se- excuse me, executive session. At eleven fifty eight A M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel. That's allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session and, did we say fifteen minutes?
Uh, thirty.
Huh?
Thirty.
Thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be the three commissioners, uh, H R and finance.
Okay, I will second, moving to seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. I mean.
Okay, we're back in open session, um, we have thirty minutes.
So Connie's not going to hers today?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, that's good, no. Um, okay. Do you have anything for us until then or no?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Don't think so.
Well, do you guys mind if I give you an update from the county lake meeting?
I'd like to.
That'd be wonderful, um, because I have some notes and to ask you guys to, um. So they are off to an amazing start, um. They have a committee put together, um, with. Communications director, wildlife conservation rep, construction and maintenance rep, like, they're, they have a lot of things. Um, now with that being said, they're concerned because there's three of us and they wanna make sure that they don't do something. That's going to frustrate us, right? Like, because they want to, they've had so, such an outpouring of support. Um, people wanting to help, people wanting to give money, people wanting to do all the things, um, that. They wanted, they just want us to be on the same page of, are they, are you guys okay? If they have a social media page for the county lake to help. Give information of what's going on out, out there and what the committee is doing and their progress and all of the things.
Work.
So.
That could open a can of worms.
So I just wanna point out the worms, that Memorial Hall has their own page, and I don't know who runs it, is anybody here? So it's the same worms, probably, that would be like the Memorial Hall, cuz there is a social media page where they put out information. Um, and.
Board of trustees.
I don't, I don't know who runs it.
I would imagine the rec was their own. But I'll move beyond. That, who would, who would do that, so. Why can't, what would be the difference between updating through our? Our, our page? What, I mean, what would be the difference?
Nothing, as long as your guys are okay with. Ian.
Eric, does that make sense or not? Or should it come through us first, anything?
Speaking of that.
Well, this, this is all new, so I mean, it's kind of just like off the cuff here, the.
Yeah, and you can just think about it, I'll just bring up the point.
Let's, let's go through the thing there and then maybe get a more of a feeling of what's going on.
Um, okay, so they are wanting to possibly look into um, setting up. Uh, like a foundation so that people can contribute for match day. Because there's a lot of people wanting to give money and they're like. Without having a plan to execute, like, that could be a good place to do it is with the um, community foundation. They think that Brown County and Acheson County would be interested in a foundation where people on both sides could give to the, to the lake.
I was gonna say, is it gonna be money to the county, or are they gonna have their own holding account?
So. Those are things that. Your feedback, right, because I'm getting to one for you is, he would like to start. Soon, um, with reservations, so. Knowing that the county doesn't have the staff or ability to do it, and we no longer have a caretaker. His thought was he could be the interim caretaker of. Creating, if you guys go to Kansas City and park in the parking lots, it's kind of like self-service, you do the QR code. And you pay your money and you have your receipt that, hey, so.
If not, you're toast, so. They don't do it out there, then what?
Well, so, couple questions, one, the QR code with the fund, could that be something we could set up here? Okay, so that that QR code, the fund goes to you, and then you could give an update on, they had this many reinforcements.
Do reports.
Yep, so they have like, the idea of dry camping on. The south side. Where in tents, and then wet camping over where the RVs are, which there was one out there this weekend, um.
Wet camping, I said.
Wet camping, so having the ability to. Yeah, water or.
Freshwater available, but it wouldn't be sewage.
No. No, and they actually have thought through that, that they think it's good not to have that, because, um, it gives people to go. And then when you go dump, then you should, you do stuff, other things, right, like whether you're in Acheson, you grab a bite to eat or something. But being able, then, let's see here. Communication channel, oh, if the committee then would communicate with the commission directly on what. They're doing and their updates, which they're coming in sixty days as required, but they want, they don't wanna miss a season, like right now, people are. Out there, right, like, and there's no current way of. Renting, they, they wanna use like rental rates, so that you rent it. I mean, they planned their son's birthday party for July, wanna rent it, have a, has a reservation, um.
There's already reservations, placed reservations and they're posted online. We have a form that everybody's supposed to send in, and most of the people don't, they'll come in whenever they want. If you have it reserved, then somebody else, if they get there before you, they just take it.
How much do we be charged for that?
We can't charge for that.
Never been a charge.
So maybe, is that something that?
That's been that way for a long time. Are there any already current, I mean, cuz they ought to be aware, at least that there's right now, that if they start that, that there's gonna be. Maybe s- somebody.
We have to look, Emily keeps track of all that, we just redid everything here a week or two ago. On the reservations, trying to make it better, because we get phone calls at Friday night at eight o'clock, that hey, I'm gonna be there tomorrow. Well, we're not available to take phone calls Friday night at eight o'clock. And people just kind of been coming and going and say, please.
So is that something we could turn over to the committee?
Well, I've, I've missed part of the, part of the conversation here, and that's why I came down. I don't understand exactly, is the committee gonna be taking over, or how's, how's this work?
Well, so.
That's, that's what I would like to know, we found a key to the box on the west. End of the lake, so we can start putting information back in there like it should be. Uh, Emily went out there Thursday or Friday. Put pictures of the lock, did everything she could and finally found one. Uh, we wanna get the information posted there so people can see it, but if there's gonna be a committee doing stuff. And collecting money, I just wanna know where I sit in all of this, and how that's all, how that's all gonna work. Whether these people are gonna. Going to answer directly to the committee, or they're, they're gonna answer. To, to us as a county lake department, so that's kinda. Kind of what I'd like to know.
Yeah, all, and they do too, like, this is a great conversation, because they are like, they, they get. They know all the roads and bridge needs, right, they know that the lake is a lot of, of things, so. They've agreed to step up and to, to take on like, doing all the things, and they wanna start implementing it with the county, but. Obviously, they don't wanna overstep or do anything.
Well, it's just like if they had volunteers for mowing, but we've already got someone contracted to mow this year, so.
And you'd asked about the mowing, it's a different person, and that's probably, it's been a little better than it had been.
Yeah, I think it's, it's not been a problem with the quality of work, but what I'm saying is there, how is it gonna affect? If all of a sudden they have a different mode and they wanna implement it this year, but there's already someone under contract to mow the rest of this year. The, the volunteer isn't gonna maybe work till next year if we don't hire it out.
We contracted is just mowing the yard space, right, not like brush hogging.
Okay, so, I have to go in and look at what the, uh, wildlife and parks part of what we. Mow or burn every other year, every three years, and I had a discussion with one of the uh. Uh, people who were out there last Thursday, I believe, or Wednesday, I drove out to see what the guys had gotten done. There was a person who's been into these meetings and we were visiting, and uh. Stat was brought up, well, I need to look and find out exactly what our, uh, what we're expected to do with our department of wildlife and parks. You know, the hunting and all that. But it, it, some of it doesn't, but I have to make sure that I'm, we're getting, still getting that.
With, for the agreements that we would have, like the walk-in hunting and all of that, we're gonna have to.
Cuz we still have to have some type of wildlife habitat to. To keep those, so.
And that was one of the things brought up too, cuz one of the guys from that is on the helping and he's like. They don't, don't want it to be a negative, cuz it's great that they have everything mowed up and it looks amazing, but some of the things that got mowed up. Play a part in the habitat, and so, it's just one of those things of.
We went out and mowed around the whole lake last week, around the dam and took all that brush out, ran the fronts.
When is that log was still in, I went out Thursday.
It's gone.
Oh, it is now, good, it's gone, good.
Yep, they got out kayaks and live jagged Thursday. Pulled it out.
What was it?
There was a log stuck in the drain. See, there's no one, so everybody understands this. There is no one to talk to about like that vow, where it should be or where it shouldn't be, cuz I reached out. To uh, a former brunbridge superintendent, well, they always have the caretaker and the caretaker took care of all that. So it's kind of a find out as you go on those things, but it's set to where it kind of keeps the level with the spillway. Where it needs to be, it's not always corrupt the top, pounding the top of the spillway. But there was a, there was a stick in there and I crawled out there and I couldn't pull it out and hang on, so the guys, it was.
They tried to pull that out before and couldn't get.
Well, we got it. Guys, got it, but that's, that's why I came in, I just wanna know what my expectations are. And how do you, how I fit in moving forward with this, or.
That's a good question, and do we, do we, uh. We sit down and write up new. Responsibilities to, 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 to include these folks, or. I mean, I know you don't wanna be directly, constantly fielding questions, you got your own, you have a good job to do, you don't need to be doing that, so. I don't know, that's a good, it's a good question for us, how do we? Cuz these folks, it sounds like they're. Hundred percent, you know, they're going, and, and. So they just have to stay within. They gotta stay in their lane, stay, because I'm sure some of these things will lead to the overall improvement. Look for things they're talking about, um. And I hope they're. I hope they're looking at. Some, some kind of big money. Projects too, I mean, cuz the QR code thing, I get that, it's, it's a convenience and it's probably gonna help. Generate a couple of bucks here and there. You know, and so these are all good things, don't get me wrong, I, I appreciate anything they're doing, but, um.
So they, they are, but we, it's like small steps, and this is a, this is a quick capture of. A season to start putting money in a fund to say, hey, we've, we've done this.
Got something going.
Yep, we've got something going, um. They had an idea, again, everything would be ran through commissioners, but they thought, um, with the survey. Um, Roger had got some rough numbers of what that looks like to kind of survey and get the roads planted and. And, um, some of those parcels cleaned up, um, that they were like, well. They've had experience selling some trees on their own land, so they're like. There's so many areas out there that maybe you pick a few trees and you sell the trees, that pays for your survey, and. And it can help, um.
I brought that to the commission before, there was something along by all that trees, I broke that up twice.
They, is there, do we have a report on the spillway being? Um, dis- and disrepair, like it's hard from an engineer?
Yeah, I've heard of that investigated.
Okay. Cuz that was another thing.
They can't give us, uh. When they were looking at, uh. When they inspected, do you recall, did they, did they inspect?
I think the, the big thing we were talking about was the dam and people get confused between the dam and the spillway. The dam is the road on the west side of the lake, and then here's the spill. But it, I think it had to do with the dam, I'd have to, I don't know, we'd have to look back and try to figure that out, but I believe it was a dam.
Is that in that county lake folder?
Sure, it was the dam.
The K camp was the dam? Cuz I was gonna say, the disrepair has always been told to us, the spillway.
Right, but when this was brought up before, it had to do with the dam, the reason the. Spillway was gated off is because at that time, the commission didn't wanna pay to have it asphalted. Then we also ran into problems of, do you put, uh. Some type of guard rail up, or how do you keep people from running off the edge of it, going over the back of the bill? And that became a real concern, you know, because if you do have a guard rail, then if we have a big rain, it's still. If there's any brush or anything that comes, how do you, how do we do that, and how do we, how do we tie that into the spillway that's already there? And that's why, uh, when it, when we didn't have it asphalted. Uh, we decided to chain the gates, so we chained them and they kept cutting them and they kept cutting them, and then we started welding them. And they broke them and then we put signs up, uh, do not enter, I think they're gone now, but that's the reason why. Because of the, the liability, risk of liability of cross, that was no guard rail or, or anything like that, so.
Cuz that was another thing that they were looking at events, um, to bring people out there and talking about, you know, walking or biking. Um, there's a gentleman, they felt. He's, um, able to create welding, uh, or railing by welding it, like a nice railing along. Along there, um, and wondered about that, because then you could walk and not worry about falling off of, of there.
He's probably, he's probably a local, I, I know, I think I know who we're talking about, but.
And I'm not against helping with any of this, just this is, these have been the concerns in the past with that spillway.
Would, would have, would have walking pedestrian rail be what we're looking at, I mean, you're talking about. So would you, okay, here's, here's the next question is, would you open it just to pedestrians?
Yes, they said not wider, they, just to walk or maybe even take a bike across, but not for traffic, like. Just, so if you do a five K or something, you could go all the way around. Just like enough for a person, right now, you can walk around them, but like, just enough for a person to walk.
Make it safe for pedestrians.
To walk through. And then on the resolution, um, just talking through some of the things that historic commissioners had on here. If, if we could update or alter any of these, um. To where, and any person organizing an event at the lake shall obtain appropriate event insurance. Uh, maybe s- just state that that an event would be like twenty people or more was the suggestion, um.
We've had weddings, there's a form. So, and, and we'll not interrupt you, but that's part of the reason why we wanted to put a box at each end of the lake. That kind of lists all these things, so they're informational, so people can. You know, hopefully, while they're there, they can look and see this is, that's what our, our take was, and her mine, and Emily's, cuz we're the ones trying to get the. Everything open and that taken care of, but that, I don't know, that's kind of what our thought was.
Um, and then just number nine, um, was talking about how. No person shall camper remain at the lake longer than, and they were comparing it to other lake rules. We have seven consecutive days, but they thought maybe fourteen would be more appropriate to give people if you're, if you're, um.
Second of the year of COVID, where they spent almost six months in one spot.
Right, and so we have a forty-eight hour absence of persons, but they thought maybe twenty-four. Um, equipment and vehicles is required between each camping period of seven consecutive days. Um, basically, it avoids permanent residence, they like that, um, and then talking about maybe putting the cost in there of what. It would, to, to reserve a spot, um, the disorderly conduct and drunkenness, it's basically states what's illegal. So, um. Taking that one out, the dis. Disorderly conduct to include drunkenness, violent language, fighting, disturbing the peace. Personal exposure by removing your clothing, it's just a little much, like, just. It's all illegal, so they just didn't know, it's number twelve, and I'll pass this over, you guys can read it, these are our current rules. Um, the discharge or use of fireworks of any kind at the lake is prohibited. They thought, well, maybe authorized only in certain areas with a permit. Um, but you gotta take into consideration the eagles, so there's more to, to flush out on this.
They leave that out, because they're also fire danger, cuz if you get death.
Well, you're building fires and fire rings.
And fire rings, but when you shoot fireworks off, it goes wherever it wants to go.
Yeah, but I also see, like, when you go camping on the Fourth of July and your little kid wants to do a. I mean, it's common sense, right, sparklers, like, that's what you do when you go camping.
Can't rely on common sense, that's why we have, that, that's gotta stay, and so does the. So does the description, hell, I'll add more to that. You want me to add more to that, on, on things that shouldn't be done out there, that needs to stay.
Um, and then just talking about proper permit. Uh, oh, no person shall solicit or advertise any product, item, or service for sale on the lake property. They feel like that should be allowed with proper permit, so if you have a reunion and you wanna have a food truck come out there. You are allowed to.
Oh, that's, but that's different.
If it's pointing the way to the food truck is one thing.
Read that again.
No person shall solicit or advertise any product, item, or service for sale.
That's different.
On lake property.
In a food truck. But if I have.
If you have a Pepsi sign.
Solicit or advertise a service for sale, that's not providing a service.
Providing a service is, is the food truck, but, but.
Operation of any business or service on lake property is prohibited.
Now, that would be good.
Now, that would be different, that would be catch the food truck. Not the other one. Well, but, okay, but that, y- y- you contract that food service to come out for your wedding. Or for your event. I don't, I don't, I think we're. Yeah, I, I don't think we're, uh, we're on this, a different page here, I think it's the same, but, but uh, it's, it's, it'd be like. Asking a catering company to come out, we have one here, bring some pork out. And by the way, don't have that on the side of your truck, you know, don't put the, is it, it didn't make any sense.
If you contract a truck to come out for an event, you've already, haven't you already paid them? They're not.
They're not soliciting at that.
You're not paying while you're there, like if you have them come out for a wedding, they're already.
They're catering.
They're catering, that's not the same as. Dog's over here, you know, that's.
Right, that's the difference.
They're not offering to everybody that's there, they're only offering to that specific group of people at that event.
But if you're looking at big, bigger. Money make like events, that like if you wanna host something out there, like have an organization do something. I'm just, I'm just starting the conversation like.
To me, they're different.
Yeah, like it's probably better for the committee to come back in, talk this.
Said, I think somebody, whoever wrote that, and I'm not reading it, I'm just.
And these are mine, these were my notes, so I might have gotten something, I was just listening and.
That, what you're reading is, where, where did that come from?
Resolution.
Off of our website.
With, just for the lake. We have a resolution.
From twenty eighteen.
We have two resolutions or something that said.
I mean, it would be really fun to have like fire trucks and food truck, fi- fireworks and food truck like event.
Yeah.
Whereas professionals putting off fireworks and then a bunch of food trucks.
Meeting for that.
And people were paying to come into it.
Yeah.
That's different than when you've got kids out there and they're shooting and fireworks and bottle rockets, that's where the danger to me comes from is. Shooting them into, oh, they see a deer and they point at it and it goes and, you know, what kids will do. Not to mention, it's, we have a very dry season, we have wind that comes up in a. Like that, I mean, yeah, that's. This is why, this is why everything needs to come through. This is, this is good stuff.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, these are some good ideas that, that you submitted, but they.
Some camping rates that they pulled from Horton too. Okay, so.
I'm curious what, what the campers pay. Like two dollars a hat?
Well, it's. Well, so the seasonal ones, I think it's for a hookup. And then seventeen dollars a day for the other.
Yeah, seventy dollars.
Which, do we have power out?
Resident season, five hundred resident season. Is there, is it completely gone from where the?
Yeah, I didn't see power anywhere.
Okay, the only that would have been is where the, the house was.
Well, then they used to have some over there, I'm guessing they pumped water out of the lake for some reason.
Oh.
There was a, on that. Yeah, yeah, okay. But I don't see any power anywhere, we just have a water meter.
So how do you, can we get power or?
If it, it's, it's not cheap. Um.
I'd have to look and see. Where it goes by.
Well, they should have to come from, they'd have to have it over there next to where the old caretaker's house was, that's, and. I think that's probably where you'd want it, if that's where the. Prime camping spots would be, that would be paying, would probably be from the old caretaker's house on that side of the lake.
So are they willing to, uh police all that on the power and if you have water, how they're gonna keep people from. Cutting locks, cause you're gonna have to have a hydrant for every spot. So that everybody has water.
Yeah, if, if it's anything like. If it's anything like Horton, yes, they have to have, you, you've got a lot of different hookups that would have to be.
I think that's probably phase two or three, they just.
But initially having some access to water.
Mm-hmm.
Through the, through the camping that I've been, cause I camp. And I believe at Horton, I don't know that they have water, I know they have electricity and then they have somebody that comes around. And dumps their. Uh waste, their septic. And you take your own water in. Uh if you're camping just a few days, you can get by with, with the water you bring in.
Right.
In your tank or whatever. Uh and some people have generators and some don't, but I know they have power up there, so.
So what, what do we do?
Well, yeah, I was gonna say. We have three minutes.
What do we do to bridge the reservation issue with, between? What he's currently got in place and what they're proposing, cause. I mean, I've. This.
How many reservations do we have right now?
I can't tell you, I know that we have one camper there and he'd been there a week. And he wanna know if he could stay longer, well, as long as no one else calls one it. Or allowed it.
They couldn't, this, does he has a res- have a reservation at all or had?
He called in.
Oh, okay.
And he did everything he was supposed to, and he even where, when we were mowing, said he would mow where he's staying. You know, while we were mowing and then he wanted to stay longer and we told him as long as. No one calls in wanting it, we will let you. And no one did, and then we had another one reserved on the south side of the lake, there was a camper there also. And at first they were kinda concerned, cause somebody else was camping kinda close to where they were, but there was enough room that everybody got along fine. But that's, that's, we do get them. But we don't all the time, we used to have someone every year went into the old boy scouts, that bottom down there where all the picnic tables are. And uh the gate had to be locked because people go in there and they tear it up, but the gate's been smashed and. And he used to mow all that and take care of it in his hand, we had a big deal down there, but I don't know how you lock it up, I told him I can't lock it up for one person. But there's an outhouse there also.
So advertising foundation match day and setting up a fund for QR codes to, are we? Good with allowing them to do that and then they would just work with our finance director to set up a fund as far as that way when they. Do it, the money goes here and we keep track of it?
Okay, then. Who, who gets the money? Is it going to?
It's in a, it's in the fund at the county. They're trying to help, like.
Okay, this is gonna, okay, but I, I thought maybe they were wanting to set up the, the foundation type.
That's for it, for people wanting to say, hey, I see what you're doing, here's a hundred bucks, like I wanna contribute and then take advantage of the match day too.
Okay, but that, that, see, I thought maybe that if they were gonna set it up, that that would be part of their operating funds, you know, that they were, that. But if it's gonna stay in the county, that's, there's no problem with that.
Well, for the QR codes, like if there's.
What's QR codes supposed to be for?
For the reservations.
So you just.
Yeah, so like.
No, I understand, we have barcodes, we have all that, we're.
But where would it, where would it go? Where would it?
To a fund.
But no, no, I mean, the code itself, how would I access to, to, to activate that code, to use it, where would I go? Where is that code gonna be located?
So they would probably advertise it and then have it out there as well.
It was on the website? Would it go, county website? Well, or would you have to have a different QR code for every?
You're hooked up. I think it would be the same, there would have to be some platform.
Once you got to.
Created to, yeah.
Then you'd say, I want site number twelve.
Yeah.
Right, and it would either let you proceed or not, if someone was occupying that spot, I would imagine.
Okay.
And.
And their thoughts.
They have the.
Post this out at the lake, is that what they were thinking, post the, the QR code?
I mean, that'd be one place I'm sure they would do it.
Cause if you're, if you're showing up at the lake and right, making like. Then it's not, it's not really a reservation.
That's my point, you need to have it somewhere. That people can access and currently they have what, your phone number?
They have the, whoever the sixty-one twenty phone number. And uh they call in.
So they're getting that.
And then we just put it online to where they can fill their application out online.
Okay.
And they send it in, but it comes to us, so however this works. If they're gonna be in charge of it, then it needs to go strictly to them and if they're not. Then somehow it's gonna be to us, so you can't have both sides doing.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, and my question would be, it's, what's the, what's the difference between the, having his number and calling? And make reservations online and the QR code? Let me see one thing, that's what Joe said about somebody on Friday night at two, seven o'clock wants to sign up for one. They're not gonna be there till Monday. So they can do it. Through the site and it'll tell them. Immediately.
Yeah.
You don't have access.
I would, I would, I mean.
Whatever.
I'd find something to.
In the county, the county website, it wouldn't be no confirmation, but if you had the QR code, it would be, it would be automatic.
They, they just wanted permission.
But most of ours, people want to camp or people looking for a wet camp and let's say, uh. They're working on our own someplace or they're doing a big power line project. And we, we used to get a lot of calls on that, hey, we're gonna be here for two months. Can we camp here? Well, it's not wet, well, then they're, they're done. So, but that's, that's been the most, but that's how we handle it on a case by case. And we redesigned it, Emily did. Where it's at least online, people who know online.
Yep, you bet, and we gotta get going to the courts, but I just need to know where we sit, if you want.
I think.
I mean, because here's the deal, like if we're not gonna allow them to do it, then we should be doing it. We should be charging for spots and, and.
We are.
No, no, we're not.
Oh.
It's free.
Free.
So you have to reservation.
But they're not really actually a camping spots. I mean, it's just, what you saw, it's all grass, you just pull in and set them wherever you can get leveled up and do your thing.
And are we marketing it, are we, you know? If, if there's a plan and a price and it's marketed.
If you had a class, how many would you have? Like if you had them.
Well, you, first of all, you're gonna go in there and you're gonna have to level it up. And your lease gonna have to put some nice gravel and get a good base to where they can come in and set their campers up. Uh and that just depends upon. Where it's suitable and uh. You know, you start out, I think you'd start out with more than four or five. That they might be, until you find out if people are gonna use them.
Yeah, this is seventeen dollars a day. What is that offering, when, when they, when they, when they have a?
Let me look it up, I, she was reading off the Horton, uh let me just look up Horton, Kansas.
Where we're at is thirty bucks a day, but they supply everything. They suit with water and electrical.
And they're calling this day camping, so it must be like a step down from. From what you're talking about.
Well, at Horton, at the smaller lakes, Horton's. Uh maybe wrong, I know they have power. Uh I think they bring their own water in. Septic is, is pumped by someone else, but uh. They can either stay by day or for a month or, I think that day camping means. Basically daily, this is the daily rent. Because we wouldn't rent someone out, somebody for three or four months.
Yeah, they have a caretaker, daily camping fee seventeen, seasonal camping permit. If you reside in Horton five hundred, daily voting permit, seasonal voting permit. Tents are the same price as campers. And then they have shelter reservations um to be made with the caretaker and then the fee up to three hours uh or a day. And a deposit, like there's a.
Yeah, I see. I just wondered what that got you for seventeen dollars, it's just a, just a spot, right? It doesn't get you water?
Right.
Down, it'll get you.
Well, I don't.
Any of that.
I've never been there, so I don't know for. So we can come back in, I just need to know, we need to give them something.
Sure.
Okay, so I would look for a motion um to adjourn into budget workshops. We have one o'clock, um the clerk of district court, we have one thirty, uh road and bridge superintendent. So I'd look for a motion to adjourn into budget workshops, then followed by.
Sure move.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye, passes.
Come on up.
Hi guys, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
So I'm, I put um. The, the sheet and numbers that you got into a format that they're used to seeing, so just wanted you to have that too.
All right, um. I've pretty much kept it the same as last year, I just moved.